Hers, but hers is, it's dark. And then, I mean, she also, she has like, you know, her-
Good evening. It is February sixth, and this is the school board meeting, and we will start the meeting with the federal leaders.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um, we will open up to the public comment as they rush to the front. Well, I'm gonna make the executive decision that Toby's gonna run up to us and speak. So, we're gonna move on to Taylor, and she can give us her student report.
So, Monday night was Poetry Out Loud, and Sophia Nolan was the winner of that, so it's awesome. I believe she's gonna go to the state competition.
The regionals.
Regionals, yeah, regionals. And so, um, Friday, which is tomorrow, so the town moderator, moderator Christopher Hawkins will be coming to speak to students who want to volunteer at the polls on Tuesday, on the eleventh, and what's that Tuesday? And for sports, the girls varsity team is, um, home on Friday versus Pittsfield at five thirty PM. And then the boys will play right after at seven thirty PM. Coen Unified Basketball has their next game against Pinkerton at four PM, February tenth, and that's away. And then varsity swim and dive team has states next weekend. Diving is gonna be Friday night, um, and swimming will be Saturday, um, later that night. Um, the varsity track has their state meet on February ninth at ten AM at Dartmouth College, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor. Um, now we could go over the committee reports, because we have quite a few going, so Jen and Marty, wanna go first?
So, we have them in two places.
Oh, we do, so should we wait?
I'll-
I can report on something else up here, and we can do that.
Sure.
Go ahead.
You wanna go ahead?
Nope.
Oh, just, I, I wanted to mention that I've been attending the, um, SST Board of, uh, Board of Governors meetings. Um, the last one was on, um, January twenty-seventh, and they talked about how they're having, um, their open houses for the sending schools, so I know Newmarket went, um, some kids from Newmarket went the next day on the twenty-eighth, um, to hear about their programs. And, um, they're looking at some new programming, um, expanding on their construction with possibly looking at HVAC and, um, plumbing to specialize, um, and to give more program, uh, more depth.
More trade, and more of a trade school.
To that program, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, there, there's a moratorium right now in the state on new programs, so they're looking at if, if it's possible to do some expansion within what's existing. So, um, so there was that, the, the meeting before that was on December sixteenth, and they were talking about the new, um, tuition structure, which, um, which was voted on the year before. Um, and basically, it looks really different because it, there used to be one tuition for, um, most kids, and a sort of a base tuition, and then there was another tuition for kids who had, um, special education needs, um, and IEPs. And they decided that they were going to make all, tuition for all kids the same. And so, so they've been kinda still mulling that over, even though the decision was already made last year. So, so that was why I'm gonna report on that.
Did they provide you with a calendar for next year? Because I'm gonna be working on our calendar for next year, next week.
We do not have a calendar yet.
Okay.
So, the next meeting is, um- I have it on my phone, I have it on my phone, but I'll make sure that, I will ask about it.
Yeah, I can, I can send this to the principal. I just, I was just wondering if they had handed one out, because we can't set our schedule till we get theirs, apparently.
Yeah, okay.
That's my understanding, so if it's not gonna be out next week, then I guess I will not be working on that.
Oh, 'cause like today, there were, what, three schools there? Exo's there, Canada was there, that one, maybe only two.
Yeah, well, we text in the morning at like four, you know, back and forth about what people are seeing, and, you know, what call we're gonna make. And as you know, this morning, we were gonna go with a two-hour delay, but then an hour later, I took, the, the temperature wasn't rising. And so, our concern was that the roads would be frozen when we were trying to pick the kids up. And we didn't want parents and kiddos to be slipping and sliding, we didn't feel they could safely board the buses and-
Right.
And travel here because of the conditions, so.
Okay.
So, we canceled, but, but they, you know, they didn't.
They didn't, yeah, so the, our next meeting is March sixteenth, um, because of the, the break, I guess. Um, so, but I will ask before then. I, it would be based on the, um, SIU sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we can do some digging on that, too, do that.
Yeah.
Susan, my, um, information, I went to the Professional Development Committee meeting on Tuesday. And what, the calendar sort of came up there in terms of when we're, you know, when you're working to build the calendar, what's the most effective way to get the most bang out of the buck out of the professional development days? Is it a, is it full days, is it half days, what does it look like? And so, the committee just, you know, obviously asked that you consider that as we were planning the calendar to get, so we can get the most effective professional development time we can have, um, next year.
Yeah, doing back-to-back professional development in the second half of the year is not best practice.
And that, you know, at-
Usually, yeah, I mean, you have some, but usually those sessions in the second half of the year to continue work that you began in the first half. So, we only had one day, which was October eleventh, after we opened school. That was the only day we had, so that, you know, so to get all the way up until February, and then February, you know, March, April, it, you know. We're doing it, 'cause we have a lot of committee work to do, so it works out this year, but normally, when we get on cycle, that, that's not the ideal time, so, yeah. I'm definitely gonna look at that.
Okay.
My understanding is I have to, I have to somehow, there's certain elements of the SST calendar that we have to take into consideration. Not sure what they are, but I'll, I'll figure that out.
They can only miss five days per quarter, like five absences, you'll find out.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question regarding the calendar, is school gonna start after Labor Day again, from now on?
If that's the, the tradition, I'm fine with that, we can bring teachers back to, I don't know what the tradition is, but I know that's the way it happened this year. Uh, I was looking at the calendar to write the, um, uh, you know, administrative narrative for the annual report, and so I was looking at the year before, and it, and it was after-
I think it was because of the construction.
Yeah.
The last two years, it's been because of the construction. So, before that point, we always started before, usually the twenty-fourth construction.
I think, I think the majority of people like it after Labor Day.
The nice thing about having it before Labor Day, and it, it does stick, so it doesn't interfere with vacation, but it's like, three days, and then after Labor Day is three days, and then they hit 'em with a five days.
Right.
And it kind of slowly lets them in, and gets teachers back on track, but-
I mean, not, not that this is the year to make all the kinds of-
I need just, I'd like to see, but certainly aren't gonna do that, but one of the things that, you know, that I'd like to do at some point in the future
is that we, we have a day where students that are moving up, like from the elementary school, or it's their first year at the ele- at the elementary or the first year at the high school, that we have a half-day where they come in, you know, for half a day before all the other kids arrive. So, you get the opportunity to kind of have a place to themselves, um, they can, you know, go through their transitions, kind of get the lay of the land, so they don't have extra anxiety on their first day of school, so that won't be this coming year. But when we talk about, you know, transitional programming for students, those are some of the, the things that you can do to help, you know, kind of ease that, uh-
Yeah.
You know, take 'em to the library, get them, you know, set up with any accounts that they may need to-
Let 'em walk the halls.
Or, you know, that type of thing, where's the bathroom, or, now we're gonna walk through your schedule, so the kids know where the band room is. Not that they're gonna remember all of these things, but they, we're not in the middle of the hustle and bustle of all the other kids there.
The big kids.
Right, and, you know, then they can stay kind of focused and on task, so.
And actually, on Labor Day, September seventh, this year.
Oh, is it?
So, it's kind of late.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna be in school till July, so, but we, again, that's, we all have to wait until everything comes out.
Right.
And I know that, you know, with the last contract, that, that changed the hours model, gave more flexibility to the calendar, so obviously-
Pat them along through, through the union.
Make sure they're in line with what everything, before we approve anything.
Yes, I had asked Joanna if she actually wanted to, to-
Perfect.
Work with me on it, so that we were, you know, being expeditious.
Perfect.
Um, I'm not sure who else used to be involved, but I'll, I'll, I just haven't, you know, that, that's like-
Yep.
All right, well, we know, I was on, I'm on budget, and we had the deliberative on Saturday, which I thought went really well. Very excited to see people show up and the discussions that happened. How was your first deliberative? It was not my first deliberative. Sitting there, wasn't it? It was my first deliberative. It was a four minute deliberative, yeah, not- Oh, no, I know, I've seen you before. It was, there, it wa, there were a lot of people that had a lot of important things to say, and, and a, a lot of perspectives, so, you know, it was, it was good to hear what, what they had to say, um, so. I appreciate you being coming out and helping us, and the discussions. Well, do you superintendent's report?
Sure, well, Taylor has stolen half of mine.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay, that was good. Um, so, uh, at the elementary school, though, we had a simulation, immigration simulation on Wednesday. And so, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, to that, that's a wonderful program and a tradition here, um, that happened earlier this week. Of po- poetry out loud, we already heard, so Sophia Nolan was the winner. Second place went to Augustus Vigarito?
Yes.
I think that's how you pronounce his name. And then, uh, third place went to Mason Tetro. So, um, it was, it was great, Mr. Pine and I, who are both judges, uh, trying to think of her name, she's, uh, last year's English Department Chair, I think, or your prior English Department-
Rosen, Ms. Rosenberne, no?
No, she was there running it.
Cass.
Somebody just, yes.
Cass.
She introduced herself.
Caswell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's Caswell.
And Mr. Otash, and Jackie in the front office, uh, was also there, so it was really a nice, uh, experience, and so proud of the kids, takes a lot of courage. And it was absolutely a perfect setting, with that new stage and the lighting.
Oh, I never thought-
It was just so Hollywood. It really was, you know, all the lights with the-
Yeah.
It really was nice.
I have been to the poetry out loud the last two years, I wasn't able to go.
This year, but it was, they always do such a good job, like the band, I think that's a cool, like, touch to it.
Yes, yes, Chloe and, um, Phoebe were at the front, you know, front. It was, it was wonderful, yeah, kids did a great job, um, and, uh, I was just thrilled. So, um, okay, what else was I gonna mention? Oh, uh, since you got the poetry out loud, um, we did run a mock election, so the state had a simulation that you could, uh, you know, um, take, you know, and, and bring into your school, and allow the kids the opportunity to go through a mock election, and so- Um, I think it was Mr. Richardson, Mr. Webb, you know, partnered to have our kids go through that experience, and then the results were posted up on the state website and everything, so it was a wonderful opportunity for the kids to engage in a civic, uh, lesson that was, uh, you know, authentic. So, wanted to mention that. And then, uh, early release day yesterday, so at the elementary school, the focus was on next-generation science standards, so, uh, they've been working on that for the last couple of years, so they, they took that time to, uh, to continue their work there. And at the junior, senior high school, um, their focus was on the POS, so the Program of Studies, which will be brought to you at the next board meeting for approval. So, we're excited about that, and I wanna give you a few dates. So, this is how that is going to go from here, so we're gonna have, on the thirteenth of February, we're gonna have a parent night to review the course selection process, and parents are gonna be invited in, and, you know, voluntarily, they don't have to, but they'll be put into two groups, those that are, you know, going to be incoming freshmen, you know, they'll have a certain orientation, and then parents that have been there in the past, um, but may have questions or wonder, you know, especially after the debacle this year, may, you know, have some questions they'd like to ask. So, we'll walk them through what the process is gonna look like and how they can support their kids. Um, that's gonna be a parent session on the thirteenth. On the twenty-first, uh, we're gonna have a student assembly with grades nine through eleven to review the process and their options. Um, the guidance will also visit English classes the week we return from break. So, they're gonna have an assembly, and then we're gonna have them, you know, the guidance counselors go into each English class, and, and, uh, again, you know, explain to the kids what they need to do, answer questions and things. The selections will then open, so selections will run until March the sixth, okay? And then the master's scheduling build workshop, so this is round one, you don't, it doesn't create like that, right? Um, will happen between March ninth and the twelfth, so our first run at the master's schedule for next year will be in March, which is good. That's, that's pretty on, on time, you know? Um, and so, we'll run iterations from there. Um, let's see, guidance and the eighth-grade teachers will begin to work with students prior to the break as well. So, that is the update on that, and I thought, uh, it was worth, uh, giving a shout-out to tonight, since these things are gonna kind of happen. We sent out an email, of course, you got an email from Principal Pine a week ago or something?
Yeah.
That went through all of that, um, and so I just wanted to, again, bring it to the forefront and say, this is what's gonna happen. Um, and then there'll be a note that goes out, uh, maybe a blast that goes out to parents, um, letting them know about the thirteenth. And maybe we'll send that out, and we'll let them know about the eleventh, remind them that that's a, you know, election day, we have no school, and at the same time, uh, let them know about the, uh, parent, parent night for course selection on the thirteenth, so. That is, let's see, what else? I think those were the hot topics for tonight, I wanted to mention. All right, so we go, we can start to handle the search process overview. So, what I'm gonna hand out are a few, actually, two different timelines, or I think there's enough, um, did you want it down to, no, I have the- So, Kim, it happens to be on the Business Administrator Search Committee, we, um, had a search committee in the fall that, uh, we could send out notes, you know, parents, staff, inviting them to participate on the search, uh, committee, and, uh, you know, we have a group of, I don't know, about six or seven, Kim, on the, on the first-
I think six.
And six, and so, it, you know, a whole variety of different stakeholders, we had, uh, you know, staff, we had community members, board members, um, staff, you know, members, uh, maybe of, and, and Shontine was the principal, so we had a good cross-section of stakeholders on that committee. Uh, so we're reconvening that search, so we're not sending out a letter asking for, you know, uh, new participants, we're gonna reconvene. Um, we did add Roger Caddy, who is on the Budget Committee, um, Sean, Sean and Christina Cochran are not going to be able to, given the demands of their schedule at this time of year. So, we've backfilled with a, you know, a couple of positions. Um, so, I'm not gonna invite new, new people in, we have a group already set up, so the first timeline represents, um, that search process, and their, their dates are set, you know, um, the process is set, the BA position has been posted since the twenty-seventh. Um, the ad closes on the eighteenth. If we don't get, uh, sufficient applicants, then we'll keep that open over the break. This is a great time of year, this is when folks are usually looking. Um, the only reason why we would keep it open is because, you know, anyone that's looking, that's not really looking, we'll say, that's not, you know, really in the market, but might kind of take a glance, might do that during the vacation week, and then they'd have an opportunity to get their paperwork together. Um, so, we may, we may extend the, the time for applications on that. For right now, it's set for the eighteenth, and then that committee will review application packets, uh, they'll set up there and select the candidates they want to interview, they'll go through the interview, um, they'll make a recommendation of three candidates that will then come up to us, their task will be done, and then, uh, they'll come here and do a site visit, and then have final interviews, and then from there, we'll do reference checks and, and then make a nomination. So, that's the BA timeline. The other big search, um, that I, I've given you a little outline for is the junior, senior high school principal's search. And so, we have not advertised that yet, so we're just, we're just starting this, and so there aren't real, a ton of dates, uh, laid out in this schedule. But I wanted to go over what the process would look like, so if the school board approves the, um, NESTEC, uh, proposal to conduct the search on our behalf, um, I would send out letters, you know, by Monday, inviting anybody who's interested in participating in that search to send in a letter of interest to Penny. Um, and so, we would be looking for another cross-section of stakeholders to participate in that, um, search process. So, we would be looking for a student that's in grade nine through eleven. Um, we would be looking for, obviously, staff from the middle school, staff from the high school, uh, probably some administration in there. We would be looking for a parent, and we would be looking for a community member perhaps, um, uh, maybe if a board member wishes to sit on that, um, you know. So, it would be a cross-section of stakeholders representing, um, various groups in the community. And, um, and so, they would, they would send those letters in, we'd create the committee, and then I would pass that off over to NESTEC, you know, who the groups are, and they would run the search from there. In the meantime, while those letters are out, they'll advertise all over the place, you know, they've got a long, uh, reach, so they can, and a lot of connections, so, you know, they would be, you know, advertising in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Vermont, and, you know, here in New Hampshire, Maine, uh, because they have a, a, you know, a huge network, um, that they can draw from. And I think that the, that that would be an important aspect of our search is to, is to go out, um, and find, you know, uh, the best and the brightest to, to come here and, uh, interview for a position as our principal, so. After that, you can see there'll be, there'll be, you know, screenings, um, there, they will recommend three finalists, and then, um, and they will help prepare for the form, so candidates in a principal's search would come here for a visit, and, uh, we would, similar to what you would do with the superintendent, and then we would go and do a site visit, gathering data throughout that process, forms are collected, um, and so, when they come here, students would meet with them, they'd provide us with feedback, uh, there'd be parent, an opportunity for parents to come in and meet the candidates, um, and then they would provide us with some feedback on some forms, uh, staff, similar, so, so they, we would get all those forms, um, we would, you know, uh, review those and, and take in, you know, input from a variety of different, um, stakeholder groups there as well. So, uh, then after that, uh, you know, leadership team would do the final interviews, and then I would make a recommendation to the board. I put the date that I would like that, uh, the process to conclude by April the ninth. Um, and, uh, that will give folks the opportunity, um, to give adequate notice in their school district, and that school district the opportunity to actually go through a search process themselves to, to backfill any, any positions, so. Um, so that's what I, that's what that, uh, process will look like, and those are some, you know, kind of begin date and kind of end date, uh, end dates for the process there.
And I, and I love working with NESTEC, and obviously, you've done it a lot over the few years, seven years I've been here, so.
That's what I was gonna ask about, actually, that you have experience with them.
Unfortunately.
And I, you know, having sat on several of these committees over my tenure on the board, um, I like the process that they drive us through, and the methodical way that they go through the process of, you know, what are we looking for? How do we drive the questions? How are we consistently having interviews with every person, so that people are equally evaluated by the committee? Um, you know, it's interesting, Marty can attest, when we were doing the superintendent's search, you, we have the same sixteen questions or whatever we had, but you would get a, an array of answers based upon the person's experience and, and all sorts of attributes. And so, it's just interesting to look at, you know, when you have a foundational process that is consistently given to all the candidates, you can fairly and equally inevitably assess them, um, 'cause it's all the same, and they have helped us through that several times so far.
And I could ask them, they, their process typically is that they would come in and do focus groups, and, which is great, but not all folks can attend a focus group to tell you what they're looking for, so my preference is, um, to have a survey. Um, I, I would conduct these types of searches in-house when I was in my prior job, and, uh, you get a much greater response rate if you ask the questions, you know, usually just the four, you know, four basic questions. Four in terms of qualifications, you know, what kind of challenges do we face, so that when you're looking at the candidates, you're matching their, you know, their strengths with what you're looking for, um, so you, you know, just something simple like that, and then, um, and then they can do a theme analysis, so. Um, I've asked them if they would, you know, do both, and they're, they're fine with doing that. But then they take that, and they come up with the themes, um, and then you have a good profile of what are you looking for, because there's a season in every organization for different types of leaders, and, you know, you wanna have somebody that's highly qualified first, and then you want their strengths to marry what the job requirements are for you at this point in time. You know, that can lead in whatever school improvement efforts that you're, um, you know, gonna be looking at in the near term and long term, so.
And so, that would go out to staff and parents?
Yes, that would go out to staff and parents, they do focus groups with students as well, so, so you, you get a, yeah. So, I think, you know, the community deserves to have a comprehensive process.
Yeah.
And, of course, with being five people out of eleven short in the SAU office, it just wouldn't be possible, uh, administratively, couldn't, I couldn't have a principal, or I just, there isn't anyone else to-
Right.
To conduct the search right now. In the future, we'll have an assistant superintendent, hopefully, and a, and a BA full-time, and we could actually run these processes quite well in-house if you have the staff, but we just don't, so.
And we actually haven't had it in quite a while, so that's why we've had to use NESTEC, because again, it gives you that, and there's no skin in the game from NESTEC.
There isn't.
Right, they, they go through the process, they pick the candidates that meet the needs, that they've learned through the surveys and focus groups.
So, so they'll do the first screening, you know, they'll take your criteria, once it's developed, and anyone that doesn't meet your basic qualifications, you know, they're not certifiable, they're not certifiable, you know, they don't have certain experience that you're looking for, then, then they, they, you know, we don't, we don't ever get involved in, in that, and so it's really unbiased, there is no, you know, you're gonna get the candidates that are qualified, and then you're gonna screen them for, you know, how, how do they fit with what you are looking for in terms of leadership characteristics and background knowledge, um, based on what you're faced with in the next couple of years, so that, and the committee work will, you know, uh, they'll do the committee work, so that your questions that are being asked, you know, are, are targeted towards what it is that you're interested in learning about the candidate that would help you to know whether or not they have the skills and background to, to lead you in the areas that are, um, critical for you. whether or not they have the skills and background to, to lead you in the areas that are, um, critical for you.
Since that, I like the suggestion of the survey, just because it's difficult for people to get to one place at one prescribed time.
Exactly.
That allows them to do it on their own terms, and we can potentially and most likely gain more information and more insight, and to make a better decision.
Yeah. It makes it more people getting involved, it's easier for them, more accessibility to being able to.
I think they would be the answer.
And there's a number, a number, a number of points here where they can give their best, so.
Yeah. Some people don't like to speak out in the open, so doing it.
Yeah, some people are bashful, and some people are extroverts, and, you know, this gives, uh, maximum opportunity for voice. That's important in any process, I think.
One of the things that I've been impressed with, again, with all the searches, is the student involvement that we've had. Because that is why we're all sitting there, and it's all, I'm always impressed by the questions that the, the students come up with, their thoughtfulness in the process, and it just reinforces why we all sit here all day.
Yeah. Yeah, so there'll be three opportunities for that, both for students as well as, you know, parents.
Yep.
And so that would be, well, four maybe, right?
Yeah.
They can, they can, you know, put their letter in to be on the committee, so that's one they can. When we're doing the surveys or focus groups, they can give us input there. And when we're doing, um, the forum onsite, they can also come and give us input there. So there's like multiple opportunities, uh, for folks to be able to participate in the process, so.
And when would you like to hear from them? The people start sending in letters of interest?
So I would say if I get that out on Monday, by, just before, you know, the vacation break.
Okay.
You know, at the latest, maybe it'll be sooner, I'll count ten days or something like that, and, you know, folks can get their in, so that I can then appoint the committee.
Right.
And then I can, I can give that off to NESTEC.
Yeah.
You know? Uh, and then they can, they can take it from there. They'll, they'll, they'll be starting ahead of time, they'll get, like, we, we worked on, two weeks ago, Sherry, um, in, in the SAU office and I put together like a brochure, we put together an ad, we put together like the demographics for the school district, and a little blurb about Newmarket, and, so we're kind of, we've kind of really had been working to gear up because in order for NESTEC to do that, which they'll do a, a higher level, more professional brochure, but they have to have the content. So we've, we've already created the content, and we're ready to pass that off. So if the board approves that contract tonight, then we have a whole packet of stuff we can ship off, and I can get working on the letter after I get the annual report, um, narrative completed, and a few other things, um, that are, uh, just in the queue ahead of this, so. So that's what the process is, we'll get these two launched. Is our hope that, you know, by next month, we'll have a full complement of business, uh, staff. So right now, I mean, we're actively screening for the accountant role and the administrative assistant to the business administrator. There was a great applicant pool for that. And so, we're, we're really excited that, you know, maybe in a, you know, I mean, the BA won't be starting until, you know, July. We'll still use the consultants in the meantime, but if the consultants we have that are, have been committed to us and will be staying from now until the end of the year, very qualified, I had sent you there, a little blurb on them, just having presence here will just be a, a whole different ballgame. Just to have people here during the day, you know, four days a week, it's not, you know, it's not as, it's way more than we've had, it's not as much as we need, but it's, we'll take anything. Right, and just to have that consistency, and then having them onboard, you know, this, uh, the new positions, and get some systems in, in place and address some of the audit issues that were, were brought to our attention, which you will have the audit at the next meeting, we're working on that also. So, um, so it's very exciting, so we're hoping that we'll have, uh, all of those positions filled. We'll get the principalship, uh, quite early April. And then, you know, in another week, of course, you'll see those professional staff positions, we'll post for those. And we'll get our first phase, our first round, um, of hiring, the hiring cycle, you know, in motion, so.
That looks good. So I wasn't here when you went through chapter one, so I don't know, did, I mean, anybody out and listening to us, we've been going, reading the building grade school board superintendent workbook. So we're going over chapter two, and though.
This is so far my favorite chapter, even though it's chapter two. Partially because I am a new member.
Right.
So it was interesting to me that they indicated it can take two years before you become pretty acclimated to how
Right.
the school board runs, and the do's and don'ts, and, and just rules and laws and things that you have to follow. So I thought that was really interesting, and it almost made me feel a little bit better, because there is such a learning curve, you know, and I'm, obviously, you're learning all the time, but.
And, and we have gone through so many board members that we often forget. Cause I'll be like, don't you remember this, and I'm like, uh, no.
And that, and that was also in here about, every time you change
Yep.
and introduce a new board member, it's almost like you have to start over. So that was interesting, but it also made, even though you may have new board members, the board isn't incapable of making, uh, um, they're still are capable of making a good decision.
Business is business.
Right, right, so, but, um, you know, and a lot of, I won't take all the, yeah, the good stuff here, but, um, I really like this chapter, it, it explained a lot to me in how things, um, run, and how I, you know, I understand why sometimes you kinda feel a little lost or, um, overwhelmed because, well, there's a reason for it, it takes a while to.
It's a while.
So, yeah, this was, maybe I'll have another favorite chapter as we go, but for right now, it's chapter two.
Well, I, I was fortunate in starting when I started, because, um, we were doing the workshops at that time. So, it was, it was July, it was, there was more time, it was the summer, and we did quite, actually, I spent a lot of time with you guys. Right, right, all together.
We didn't scare you away too quick.
Uh, no, but, but, so that, you know, that was, that was really great, and, and I'm assuming that's something that you do every summer, is there's, there's time
For retreats.
to sort of retreat workshop.
That's what I, I tried to bring that back, cause that was really important.
Yeah, it helped me a lot to get, to start to get acclimated, but still, you still, when you, when you're sitting in a meeting, it takes a while to, to feel comfortable. Um, so I like that, the other thing that I got from this is that, um, I think I wanna start looking into this, the state association, and, you know, what kind of professional developments that I can do. Um, so, who wants to join me?
I'll join you.
And I know, but I know that there are some web courses as well as.
Yeah, there's more web courses than there were before, which is nice.
So that's, that's my, one of my personal goals, is to work on that.
I mean, and we have the benefit of those memberships, that we have a, a membership for, so we might as well take advantage of it. And I think that that, you know, it talks about the fact that there are overall things that all school boards have to do, but there are things that are particular to each community, so we have particular Newmarket things that we'd have to learn. But if you have the baseline of what the foundational role is, and, you know, even fundamentally, what happens in a meeting? How do I make a motion? If you, you know, you're not someone that's used Robert's Rules or anything of that in the past, you know, what, how do we talk about it? Can I talk about it? Fundamental things that are assumed that people know, that we should not assume that people know.
Well, and it, it said in here also that people that go from district to district, even superintendents, that, you know, you might move, is to try to make everything, um, not the same, obviously, but consistent, so. So that was, that was interesting.
You know, Jen, I was thinking about it, because I was looking at some notes, and I think, you know, we have the retreats, we had Barrett Christina come and talk to us here, right when you came. You know, in, in Marty's turn, we've been sort of in upheaval in the times since she came, so we have not sufficiently done that. I know Mike, Mike went, went, met with you, went to myself, so I think, you know, we just have to really consciously think about that, and really focus in, you know, we had a new superintendent, how do we deal with her onboarding? Did we do it effectively, did we not? What areas do we need to improve on? How do we set her up for success and help her understand the climate that is Newmarket, that is different from other districts? Just as for us, the same is for her, because there's a political component to what, to all the roles that we're playing. Not in terms of getting re-elected, but in terms of navigating the waters in which you find yourself. No town is the same, um, and I think those of us who have been here longer, or in town longer, might have a different perspective on things. Some of us are newer, have different perspectives on things that are just invalid, but sort of sharing those things and the experience so that we can all move the train forward collectively is what we, we need to do. I mean, you know, I'm looking at this, I'm like, here is a, you know, sample school board orientation program.
That's, yeah, I wrote that.
It's like, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Here's the sample program, we can get with Penny to say, you know, when people come on, make sure they're set up with the school boards association, make sure that they're checking their email to verify the times. Is there a time when we can bring, you know, maybe get a couple of school boards from different towns together, have Barrett come to do some training? You know, there's ways that we can do this without.
And what would, wouldn't that be great, we could do it right in the new cafeteria?
In the new cafeteria.
Right, I love that idea.
So, I mean, just, just to share, you know, with different communities, you know, SST, there's sharing there, sharing of ideas. Again, it's the same fundamental things, we each should do it differently, but it gives you a different perspective, and maybe there's something in another town that we could benefit from, and, and institute for us. So, just some thoughts that came out of my brain.
Well, that, and, cause I was just thinking, but we didn't, like, poor Marty, we were just like, here's your email, here's this, and then we're like, no, Marty, can't do that.
Pretty much.
So I'm like, here's the deep in.
Yeah. So, to put that, we had that book at one time.
Amazingly.
Yeah, we had the book at one.
Still keeping afloat.
We had the book, I don't know what happened to the book.
I never got a book.
You never, cause we looked at the book.
I got a big, thick book.
Mike had it, yeah, I, I thought that he had.
A blue book?
It was a, a notebook, right, uh, like a three-inch binder or something?
Yes, yes, so Mike, you, cause Penny was on leave at the time, she wanted the book.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't use it with you? I, I thought.
We, we can do that on a retreat, cause you two, by then, will, will.
And we can have, we have these two people that can say, this is what I would've enjoyed, uh, learning about.
Yeah, oh, great, we'll make another committee, boom, there it is.
Mike, Mike comes back, there's new committees, all things are going crazy.
But I, so I said that, we need a member program, we've always said that, but with everything changing, I mean, I've had, the seven years I've been here, I've had four superintendents. So it's never been, it's just, this is the most consistent board we've had, you know, which is a nice, so yes, etiquette, um, and then we need, need something for the superintendent as well.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you can help us with that in eight years.
Eight years.
But then you go, was it in, was it in this, or was I reading someplace else, that the average superintendent says?
Six years.
Six years, yeah.
It's in here.
Not here.
No, Massachusetts, it's three years.
Really?
And I think it's similar, probably here.
We've been pretty consistent with three.
Well, not if you've had four in seven years.
That's true, math. So, all right, effective work, so then we go with the basic, I was gonna read the basic overview, but we don't really have to, I mean, we, we know.
I mean, I was thinking, maybe even if we did some of these professional, the, in our meetings sometimes, like, you know, to carve out that, that, that might help us as well, just to reinforce those ideas and get the conversation starting, just.
Well, again, people don't, and I said this earlier in the meeting, that people don't understand that the work that we have done in these retreats, and we've done at these meetings, if, if you're not watching, you're not, we have been doing some of that.
Right.
And it actually has helped develop what we're looking for, what we expect from Susan, and what we're looking for in the future for this, for our district, so. We're, we're doing this so we have an effective board relationship with Susan. And now, we have to take all of that we've learned and bring it back out to the community, so that we can, in our spare time, we can do that, yeah.
Yep.
But, I mean, I, I like to, the, um, the chapters well. And again, it's, it's on the minutes, we put it, it'll be in there if anybody wants to read with us.
It's on the website.
Yeah. Is that it for that? And we can move on to the, our committee updates. Do you want to take that, Kimberly?
The entry plan committee will be having its first meeting next Wednesday from four to six in the town hall auditorium. Susan taught me how to do a doodle poll,
Poll.
which I've been calling doodle pool. And, results from my poll, and the majority of people could be there at that time, so that's what time it is, and we look forward to the work. I met with Susan on Martin Luther King Day to sort of review the framework for the framework for the committee. And then I met with Elizabeth last Friday to review that, and she and I will bounce some stuff off before Wednesday, get with Susan, and make sure that we're on the right track. And I look forward to working with our committee and getting this work done.
Yeah, that's good. Not that it's a competition or anything, but, um, we already.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
People already met.
So, the, the website.
Floating in the Caribbean.
Yeah, the website and, um, communication committee was not floating in the Caribbean, but we were having, we, we met last.
We had chocolate chip cookies.
We did. And, um, yeah, we met last week, we had our first meeting, we have our second meeting scheduled for next week.
The thirteenth.
Which unfortunately, it is on the thirteenth, so, um, but we have a big committee, and so, um, we'll hopefully get as many people there that, that can. And, um, so, yeah, I think, the, did, did you wanna talk at all about the, the first meeting?
Well, um, I thought the first meeting went great, we separated into groups, we talked about how, what, what does everybody see? One word defining communication, how do you see communication? And everybody went through a whole listing of things, um, then we went through, uh, one word that defines Newmarket's communication. And we had a whole listing of that, and we were able to talk about it and come up with, um, not really come up with ways to improve things as of yet, but we are working on that. And, um, yeah, we also are gonna have some public meetings come up, public forums, and we have the date set, we have Tuesday.
So I think, I think out of the, the conversation, we did kinda come up with, well, we had already started talking about those, those, um, community forums.
Right.
But, and our major charge is to fix the website.
Fix the website, exactly.
And, and, um, so tho- those were two things, um, that we had, we had talked about. So the community forums, we do have dates set, um, so Tuesday, February eighteenth at six P.M. in the new cafeteria. And Saturday, March seventh at ten A.M. in the new cafeteria.
Okay, Saturday what?
March seventh.
March seventh.
So we have one before break, and we have one after break. Um, I, I think, so, one of the things that the, um, committee's gonna do at the next meeting is planning those. So, planning out the, um, what'll be involved. We're, we're hoping that they'll have some time to give, maybe some students can give some tours of the new areas and, and that sort of thing, but also, um, hopefully, Susan will be able to, um, fill them in on the happenings, so, what's going on, the good stuff that's happening in our schools, so. And, you know, maybe answer some of these questions about the scheduling that you've just laid out, or, but the, the committee is going to be working on
Some topics.
on, on planning, yeah, planning that next week. Also, um, planning on, um, putting out a survey to, um, to staff and parents about, um, how can we improve the website? I don't think it's a surprise to anybody that we've gotten a lot of feedback on website could, could be improved, so they'll, they'll be working on that, um, survey next week as well. As, um, one of our committee members came up with a great idea of having an infographic on the budget. So, um, so like the town does, a page infographic on, on the budget, and so that would be the third thing that we're hoping to, to knock out next week.
Now, are we gonna mail, is that infographic on the web, are we gonna mail it, what's the plan?
Well, that, that's, the committee's gonna plan that. But any, any, you know, ideas are welcome on that. We do have, we, the committee's made up of teachers, of, um, other staff, parents.
Oh, that's nice.
Um, it's a nice mix, so, um.
We do have about fourteen people total?
I think fourteen, I'll say, I think fifteen now, I think we're gonna have a new member.
Think we have one more, right.
So, um, so, yeah, so I'll be getting out the, um, agenda and the information packet for the next meeting, either tonight or tomorrow.
Are there any particular topics that, um, US board members can think of that you would like
I would say, with, with those dates, Elizabeth did some, I think, you know, an overview on the budget topics would be good, since the, the voting day is right there after the second one. Using the infographic, or whatever, you guys, the best, determine the best way to communicate it is, but that might be one of the topics.
And I had received that, um, feedback from another person as well, community member.
You know, one of the things. You know, one of the things that I think, and I don't know how we communicate this, but just, you know, really focusing on the positive things that are happening in the school, you know, successes academically, athletically, out of the classroom, just, just high things that our students are doing that are great, because there are great things happening, um.
That was one of the things I took from the deliberative too. Like, we have, we've been, I'd like to start talking about positive things. This is a great community, we have a great system, we're gonna make it better. Um, so, yeah, I'd like to start focusing a little positive as well.
I mean, you know, and also, just celebrating, and we'll get to this later in the year, on the fact that the building is almost done. Um, and, um, that we came together as a community to make that happen. So that is a success that we can all share, when the time comes.
Well, and I think there are things that incrementally that you have done in the last couple of years that will position us to be able to do some exciting things in the future. So your building has been updated and renovated and expanded. You settled a contract with your teachers in the last year that helped improve, not, didn't get you as far as you want to be, but it certainly,
Right.
uh, got you further along in the process of, of, of providing them with a competitive benefit package. We just settled a three-year contract with the payer professionals, which will put them second, uh, highest paid in this area. Uh, so we should be able to, you know, attract, um, you know, candidates to, to our community to do. We have a lot of work to do, but, um, just means that we'll be, you know, safely employed for, you know, the near future, because we don't lack for, for things to do. But there are things, you know, you started the Model UN program a couple of years ago, you've, you know, there's a lot of.
And got best, best small-town team.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We're hoping to get our tro- trophy up once the, all the, like, all the trophies and the cases before people start touring. I think that would be cool.
Yeah.
Hallways are kind of empty right now.
Mm-hmm.
They look beautiful, but they're empty. So hopefully, before people start, like, touring, we'll get those up. That's something student council is looking at.
Can we get a trophy for the boys' soccer team, so that we can, like, there's so many things we need to put in there.
Even the swimming and diving that Nicole started last year, that's.
Cross, uh, girls, girls cross-country won, um, Granite State Conference two years in a row.
Wow.
We need to find all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot, and I think, you know, just focusing on that, because it's gonna, you know, and sort of, both of those things, the, all those things you mentioned, Susan, were based on community support, because without the citizens voting for this stuff, none of it would have been able to happen. So how do we then parlay that into taking us to the next step and getting everyone on the same page moving forward?
Well, and a lot of our budget, um, proposal is restoring what has been cut the last several years. You know, at the, you know, didn't, oftentimes at the deliberation, people were making statements, not asking questions, you know, but one of the things that struck me was a lot of misinformation about the assistant superintendent and, you know, curriculum coordinator, and how many administrators we've had at the, at the buildings, and, you know, what happened was that you used to have three administrators in both buildings. It was called a special education coordinator, an assistant principal, and your principal, and you had that in both buildings. And then, one of those curri- uh, uh, special education coordinators was cut and tried to be split between two buildings. Well, that didn't work out so well. You know, you used to have, for years and years and years, you had a curriculum coordinator, sometimes they're called curriculum directors, sometimes they're called assistant superintendents, um, they're the same function, just titled differently. And one of the reasons why they're titled differently is in order to have your certification as a su- a superintendent or assistant superintendent, you have to have at least a CAGS. So, if you don't have a CAGS and you don't have a doctorate, then most likely you're called a curriculum coordinator or a curriculum director, because you don't have, in, in New Hampshire, you have to have that. Massachusetts, you only have to have a master's degree. Here, you have to, 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 to hold those positions, but here it's different. Sometimes people are called assistant superintendents, um, and some are called curri- curriculum coordinators, but you had those. When Dr. Hayes was here, you had a full-time B A, um, you had a curriculum coordinator, you had three administrators in each building, and, uh, you had a full complement of staff at both buildings, in terms of teaching professionals and support staff there. And over the course of the last number of years, you've reduced that, and reduced it, and reduced it. And so now you find yourself in a place where you've, you've overcome. And as a result of that, and a variety of different decisions that were made along the lines, um, we find ourselves here, so. You know, I think there's oftentimes, um, information that, that people don't have all the facts, and then they repeat some of those things. So I think having these forums will be, you know, one way for us to be able to share some of those, those details. And so, next year, if this budget is approved, then at least you'll have the staff, you, and this new staff that comes on board. We've got to develop all this program that has gone by the wayside, you know, and so it's not a matter of they're just gonna walk in and, you know, presto, change-o, things are gonna be in, no, you've got to, you've got to, we have to rebuild, you know, um, in many, many areas. And at, at the next board meeting, we'll talk about the Program of Studies, we're gonna talk about the NIESC report, which is coming up. Where are we standing right now in relation to those standards, you know? That's gonna tell you what kind of work is in front of us, and it's a lot of work. And so, when we're looking at hiring a principal, you know, we're gonna look at folks that kind of have a background, that help us to, uh, realize, you know, those standards, that, that, that we're not, we're not making, uh, uh, if we, if we were to be evaluated right now, um, we don't, we don't meet the mark on many of them. And so, that just tells us where our gap is. It's not a bad thing, it, it is what it is, right? We find ourselves here, let's not find ourselves here again, and so, um, by adding this and approving this budget, we'll be able to do better. Another student said it that, you know, hey, I'm going to college, it was great, and I think we do provide a good education for many students. We just don't happen to pro- provide it for all students right now. You know, so it's, 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 it's not a matter of nothing good is happening, it's that there's, there's a lot of space here to do well by all, and I believe that's why you hired me, because that's a strong value that I have. It's not good enough for me to do good for some and not good for others. We need to do well for every student here. High-quality learning experiences that meets the needs of every child, and that's the work that we have in front of us. So, by adding these positions, by getting, you support these targeted positions and, uh, you know, resources for programming, we'll start to rebuild.
And, and build relationships again. We, we've said this, I don't know how many meetings, we have U N H right, right over there. And U N H has fresh-faced students who need to come in for internships.
Exactly.
But we need to have, we need to have an open house. Come be an intern with us.
Right.
You know, and, and then you get to pick some people and.
You absolutely do, and that's why we need to have the staff in place to be able to have the capacity to do that. It's not even possible right now.
Yeah.
That, you know, I, I can't get out and, you know, I meet with as many people as I can, I'm all over the place. Um, but it's still not enough, because we still have to be here doing all the work of all the other people that are, that are missing, and other people. I'm not the only one that's working more than, you know, a yeoman's share. Um, many people are here, and the school district are doing so in order to, but, you know, we don't need to burn people into the ground, just, uh, you know, we need to provide people with, uh, uh, the support and resources to be successful. Otherwise, you're gonna continue to have a high turnover rate here, because it's not sustainable. So, I, I think that the exciting part is that if the community supports this budget, you know, um, with the contracts that have been approved, you know, by the committee, and then, and hopefully the community for the parent, then it provides us with this really solid foundation to build from. If we don't get the budget, then we won't have the ability to build that foundation, because we're just not gonna have the capacity. Um, but we'll have at least the teacher's contract, hopefully the payer contract in the building. We'll just have to wait and postpone, you know, the types of, you know, improvements that will help us to be able to meet the standards for NIESC and, you know, and improve the, you know, curricular, uh, you know, offerings at the elementary school as well, so.
Well, that's, when you, when we learned about Super Kids, we were all so excited for Super Kids, to have it just stop at third grade, and we've just stopped those two years ago. We haven't improved on that since.
Right.
Like, that's frustrating, because that's, that's what we're talking about. That's the, helping these kids move on and, and keep learning, and if you, if there's a gap, that's where we're, we like to lose the kids.
And with literacy, in many ways, no, I see. Once you fall behind, it's really hard to catch up.
Yeah.
It's really hard to catch up, so.
Our, again, our teachers do an amazing job, and we, we're really lucky. Everybody's always, and so one thing you can say about Newmarket, everybody's always worked so hard to do their best job, and we're very lucky.
Yep.
But we, we need to give them the support so that they, yes, they have what they need to.
Absolutely.
And with that, who's on the Culture and Climate Committee?
So that's a staff-only, and, um, it's made up of, uh, you know, staff from both buildings. And we've met twice, we're meeting again on Monday, and where, uh, we have half of the upcoming Professional Development Day. It's going to be, uh, programming developed from the Culture and Climate Committee. The morning is going to be, um, a committee work. And so, it's an opportunity for faculty to, to read, um, and, uh, learn more about some of the topics that were, were, uh, are related to the committees that are, have been recently formed, so, um, so there's twenty of us on the committee, so there was a lot of interest in, in this particular one, and, and at our first meeting, we, um, you know, we did, again, we did reading, we watched some videos, you know, to try to get our head around, what do we mean when we say culture? And what do we mean when we say climate? These are, use, words are sometimes used interchangeably, what do they mean? So we, um, we spent some time unpacking that, and we came up with our definitions. So this is our definitions of culture and climate. Climate is the fluid vibe, attitude, and atmosphere experienced within an organization. Culture is the foundational values, beliefs, and traditions that guide actions and behaviors in the organization.
I like this.
So, yeah, I mean, we had a lot of conversation, you know, to get to these particular words. A lot of times when you read on this, people say, oh, it's the personality, you know, versus the attitude, but what does that mean? Those are kind of vague, right? And so, I was really pleased that, um, we really talked about what we, you know, some experiences we had, um, that created a kind of an atmosphere and a feeling that we couldn't necessarily describe, and so that's where the vibe came from. It isn't necessarily something you see, it's an experience that you have. You know, and sometimes you don't know why you're having this experience, because you're internalizing something.
Right.
You know, it's like, something's off here, or, oh, this really feels comfortable and wonderful. You know, those, you're having an experience, you know, but it's not necessarily based on a, a direct interaction that you have with somebody, but sometimes it is. And so, so that's, uh, that's how we define climate, it was this experience, you know, how, what's this vibe that's created, you know? And then the culture are the things that we do, you know, what are the traditions, you know, what are, what are the, the mores, you know? Um, that, that, the tacit underlying, um, knowledge about how to navigate within the organization, you know? Um, what are the values that we have that are driving the way that we behave, so, you know, so just having this provides us with a framework, as you know, from getting your little mini sessions with me, that when you're doing an inquiry group, you do readings, so that you can grow your understanding of a topic, um, but you also do it to identify frameworks that will help you to better understand things. If you can come up with a framework, then you can look at information, process data, you know, against those particular frames, you know? So what is culture and what is climate? So in the upcoming meeting, um, what we're gonna do is, uh, the staff survey, um, that was taken in June, um, we're gonna take those themes, and we're gonna go through those, and we're going to identify which, which of those ki- themes relate to the climate, and which ones relate to the culture, and then we're gonna have some conversations about, okay, um, how does this translate into values? Mores, you know, um, behaviors within our organization. And then, you know, ultimately, what we'll do in the long run is work with the broader staff to define what our values are. And then make commitments around those values, for what we can expect from one another, individuals here in Newmarket. That we will define what it means to be a member of the staff here. And in that way, develop a new culture, based on those commitments that we're gonna make to one another. And then the next part of the work will be providing people with the tools, so that they can engage with one another around difficult topics when the times come. And those aren't things that, that, that are always comfortable, but there's ways to be able to develop skills in those areas for people to be able to have open and honest conversations. But it has to start with what the values are, you know, and people have to commit to those, and then be able to police one another around those values. If that, you know, when we get to that point, then we'll be building trusting relationships just by having those conversations. And, uh, that will allow us to be able to, um, have meaningful conversations about our practice, um, that will have a positive impact on, on student outcomes, so. Really, really important work, we're super excited about it. Um, we've met, like I said, every week we've met, and we will continue to, because there's a lot of work. This, this committee will stay in place for probably two or three years.
I just think, you know what, and then you think about how opening day will be this year. Have positive energy, new building, like, there's just, this could be a good year.
The upcoming.
Yeah.
I mean, everything that, a lot of what we're doing this year is not necessarily outwardly visible, right? A lot of times, the hard work that takes place in an organization isn't the sexy things, like a website. Right?
Yeah.
The things that we're having, we're doing this year will result in people having a better experience next year, right? So, when we're going through the amount of work that has gone in from, uh, Ms. Stefano, um, uh, as well as other, you know, members of the faculty, um, Ms., um, Rosenberg has, has been instrumental also, she's one of our teacher leaders, uh, that has been driving this review of our program of studies, and this is just round one. We're not gonna get all there in one year, there's way too much work to do. But, I mean, people have really dedicated themselves to this work. It's, in, in many ways, been uplifting, you know, to people, to say, you know, yeah, let's, let's do this thing. Um, and so I've been, I couldn't be any prouder or pleased with the attitude of the folks in that building. It hasn't been, you know, morbid reflection, really, yeah. It's, it's really been an excitement, you know, to be able to tackle these challenges that we have. And so, you know, I think that, that leads me to be very optimistic as well. Anyone coming in that would be part of that, um, it's, it's really a good moment in time. It, it really is a good moment in time. So, um, and the work can be a lot of fun. It really can be a lot of fun. So, so we're optimistic and excited about that, so that's the Culture Committee. The High School Improvement Committees, I'll just give you a quick update on those. So, I already talked, uh, pretty in-depth about the Program of Studies Committee and all the work that they're doing. We've had student focus group, we've got all kinds of, uh, input. Maybe you can share a little bit about.
Yeah, I, I was really excited to hear that you guys were gonna do like an assembly, I think you said, on the new program, like the new Program of Studies. Because that's one thing Student Council is talking about, just making students, like, aware of their options, because I feel like it is part of the students' responsibility, not just the parents, to like, be involved in their, um, committees. And I feel like even, like, even for V-Lax and for different things, like, people don't understand, like, all the different, like, they don't have to take gym three times.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's exciting, and Student Council will be very happy to hear that, so, yeah.
Yeah, and in the Program of Studies, some of the work is not just courses, right? It's, you know, parameters and guidelines around V-Lax, what gets counted and what doesn't get counted.
Yes.
You know, and how that will work, you know? It's, it's stating that if you take gym, you take it, you don't take it three times and get multiple credits for it. You know, that learning is, is vertical. It's not horizontal. You don't get credit for horizontal, taking cla- the same class over and over again, which has been, uh, part of our recent history. You know, so it's explaining, you know, to kids that this is the way it is, and then helping them. You know, I don't think kids selected those just for the heck of it. I think that, you know, with some of the cutbacks perhaps, and, you know, some of the, uh, different strategies that were employed to try to address some of these issues, they weren't as successful as people had hoped they would be, and, and so this is, this is taking a huge leap forward, um, in addressing that, so, yes, we'll be having the assemblies, um, uh, and, and that will be, um, I think, welcomed by all.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, again, it's a, a new learning experience, you know, and every. You know, it's, it's, again, it's a new learning experience, you know, and every time we ratchet up, you know, the quality and level of rigor, we have to, we have to take everyone with us, you know? And so this will be, you know, slow, slow but steady, you know, improvement over time.
And that's also the consistency. If you can have, we had the same guidance council for twenty-eight years. So now if we can maintain employees, maybe we can get that consistency going so that, that, that guidance council can look at that student and say, I know where you need to go, where you'd like to be, you know, and that's what we need to bring back as well. We're missing that.
And, and that's it. So, you know, the investments again that we made, those restructurings we made this year aren't always visible outside. There's a lot of stuff that's going on under the hood that we're trying to clean up and straighten out. You know, we have a new IT position that's doing a part of Infinite Campus. He's new to us, but as, his capacity is growing this year, you know, we're sending him to training. You know, this will be his first time through, you know, course selection process, but we've, we've shored him up with support so that he can get through this in a way. But this is still his first time. You know, Chris Beeson, our new person there, Jen DiStefano, you know, all of them are, are bringing their knowledge background and assets to bear on this. And they're all qualified people to do this work. And so as they're, as they're, you know, making these changes and cleaning this stuff up, then we're not going to have to deal with that in the future. That means that our guidance counselors can become more student-facing. You know, as we're able to transition out of this and into that, they're, we're building our capacity, this year, we'll be building our capacity next year to be where we want to be. You can't go from where you are to where you want to be in one fell swoop. You're too, there's too much distance to travel. And if you try to do that, you create way more chaos than you'd ever provide, you know, a positive experience that scaffolds people up to where you want to be. So the stuff we're doing this year will have an impact on what, what's going on next year. The stuff we're doing next year will make, three years from now, with the support, if I'm given the support to focus on doing this work, this will begin to not look recognizable anymore in a very positive way. So it's, it's an exciting time to be here right now. And so the Culture and Climate Committee, we went over, and the POS Committee, we've gone over. We have a scheduling committee. And so at the upcoming all-day session, the junior, senior high school is going to be reading a study on scheduling. So that everybody is building their capacity and knowledge about what scheduling models there are out there. So the study is not a, you know, too heavy of a lift of a read, but it talks about, you know, what's a four-by-four block? What's a traditional schedule? You know, what's a flexible schedule? What is an element, what does a middle school schedule look like, you know? Trimesters, waterfall scheduling, all of these terms that we use probably mean nothing to anybody but me right now. But what are they, you know, and what are the pros and cons of each? Not because we're going to select one of those, but again, it's about building the capacity and the knowledge base of our staff to understand the pros and cons of these things. So when we get into visioning and then we're going to talk about how do we design our schedule to best meet that instructional vision that we have, we'll be able to know what the trade-offs are. Are these, are these positive attributes of this schedule, do they outweigh some of the negative consequences of them? Because there's no utopia here. And so that we can engage in a very productive way around these topics that we're going to face in a couple of years. So, so that, that's going to be this student month's read. The next month, we'll have another topic that we're going to read that's all related to that. I want, there's four articles at the junior, senior high school that I want them to focus on. That one, there's another one, part of which is my dissertation because I, one of my topics was flexible scheduling, you know? And so the first one is about the technical side of it. And my dissertation is about the human side and making changes and the impact of making changes to structures that are set up in education that help us to navigate the systems and, and systems that we have to prepare kids for college, right? So it talks about higher education and the impact higher education, the influence it has on what we do. We can't, we can't deny that. If we want kids to get into college, then we have to meet the requirement. And so, you know, there's a certain amount of content and skills that have to be developed if we're going to have kids be able to, you know, ramp up to the college level of rigor and be successful and matriculate through all four years. And not have, you know, only like, I think it's the statistic, something like thirty-three percent of kids do not matriculate through their college years. That's not a good number. And I'm not saying here, I'm saying this is a broader statistic, you know? And so what we want to do is not get kids into college. We want to get them through college. But if they, if they come ill-prepared in their freshman year, they're going to drop out. And it's, it's not a problem here. It's a problem in many, many places. And so we have to acknowledge that. So it's, so my study looks at that. It looks at the human side and the interplay between what we do in our practice and what these various structures of scheduling, grading, you know, periods, leveling, all of these things, how does that, how do, how, how those two things interplay to enable us to be able to get kids ready for the future? And so that'll be another reading. A third reading is going to be on restorative practice. So there's the academic side, you know, that we're looking at, those two pieces of that, which is focused on structures. And then there's going to be the student service side. So we need to look at current best practice and how we approach discipline, this restorative practice. It's not about punishment. These are adolescents. These are children. We need to help them to understand the consequences for their behavior. It's not that they don't have consequences, but if they don't know how to do things differently, then they're going to keep repeating the same thing and be punished. And they're never going to learn. And they're never going to grow. And they're never going to develop the skills they need to be successful, productive adults. And so we're going to look at restorative practice. And if there's enough time in there, you know, we'll look at probably trauma-informed classrooms, you know, and we'll look at those. If we can get all faculty at the junior, senior high school to have read one study, just one study, one article, you know, on those three top, three or four topics, you know, then when we get into visioning, it will broaden and fertilize people's minds to what the possibilities can be. Because until you have an idea about what the possibilities are, then you're always going to set your bar way too low. And so this is some of the work we'll do there. At the elementary school, our focus is absolutely going to continue to be on literacy. Needs to be on literacy and numeracy, right? Everything, even numeracy is accessed through literacy. And so being able to have a strong literacy program, and literacy is not just reading and writing. It's, it's interpreting information and the world around you. Literacy means many, many things. And so we need to have a strong literacy program. We, we need to have a strong numeracy program. Numeracy is a language of science. You know? And, and so we need to have kids that are able to have certain skill level, no matter what you do in today's world, you know? Numeracy is the language of computer science. Numeracy is the language of business. You know, many, many professions out there are fundamentally grounded, you know, in the development and knowledge of numeracy and literacy. So at the elementary school, we're going to focus on literacy. And then we have an MTSS program, which is a tiered intervention program. And right now, we have far too many kids in year, tier two and three. When you have, when you have the number of students receiving tier two and three services, it means that your tier one services are not holding up. And so you've got to take, we have to take a look at what are we doing in tier one? And so that's what the elementary school is going to be focusing on, those two elements and the junior, senior high school and the other. So very exciting, you know, very exciting work that will, that will start to launch us into the direction.
And you have people wanting to be.
Committees are packed. They're packed. They're packed.
That's, that's exciting.
It is very exciting.
Well.
You got me started there. You did it again.
You know what's nice is that, because again, people don't know, you know, why Susan? Why Dr. Givens? Well, that's why. Because in this, that's the excitement that you bring. And if you have teachers that are willing to give their time, read this on their spare time and do these things, that means you're getting our community excited again, which is good. It's moving forward. All right. So shall we go through approval of minutes for January twenty-third, twenty-twenty?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-third with one amendment. There's an E between the L and the Y at the end of my name. It's my mom's fault. It's not my. It's not you. It's me.
For your mom. It's okay. That's okay. Okay, so we are just looking for a second on that. We're the. I'll second that with the amendment.
My mom's fault.
My name is spelled correctly. All right, I'll say aye.
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 All right, great. Minutes are approved. First by Kimberly, second by John. This is the manifest. We can move to that.
I move that we accept total of all manifests of eight hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So moved, first by Kimberly, second by Marty. All right, so then we are at the, I.
Aye.
If anybody say aye. Okay, so now we're at the Nezdet contract. Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Does anybody have any questions? My question is just, is this, you, you said you've used this service before. Is this typical for what you've seen before?
We, I've, I've met with ARDS, I don't know how many times at this point.
Well, they're, I mean, they're clearly very experienced, you know, at all levels, so.
And that, you know, the nice thing about it, again, the way I look at it, there's no skin in the game. So when, when somebody says, well, where'd you get these people from? Well, this is what happens. And here's, here's how we did it. We have written proof. And we'll have committees.
As Susan said, a committee of a variety of stakeholders. And I think one of the benefits of Nezdet is that they have been with us through so many searches and they know who we are as a team.
That's true, too. That's a really good point.
So.
And again, everything, everything's always changing. Our needs are always changing. So this will, it'll be interesting to see where, what he brings us, what they bring us.
You know, and also the, the benefit of, of using them again is that we are in the affiliate program and do get the twenty percent discount too, which I think is important to note.
Yeah. Because we're in that program because of last.
We've used their services quite a few times.
Oh, dear, dear, dear.
Well, we also from them get enrollment projections. I just received from them a new program they have on special education. And they give you some information about, you know, how you're stacking up against, you know? Yeah, yeah, I thought it was very interesting. I just glanced through it. I thought, oh, this is a nice little addition. So there's other, you know, and access to some professional development and other things, you know, that they offer. So our membership is, with them is absolutely worth the investment.
School board training as well.
Yes. All right, so I'm just looking for an approval. This contract.
I motion to approve the Nezdet contract for the principal search for the junior, senior high school.
Second? I'll second that. An approval by Marty and Jen. All in agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's been approved. All right, now I need the approval for the renovated classroom projectors. It's in your packet. Mr. Carey. It's a CCS presentation system for thirteen thousand five hundred thirty-nine and a Pro AV system for thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-five.
I move that we approve these projectors for the renovated classrooms.
Can I have a second?
And I will second that.
And I say what I always say when, when we get something from Jason, I'm always grateful for his thorough and well-thought-out and well-prepared information. It helps me make decisions easily.
Again, he's one of our little hidden gems that people really don't get to see and, and know all the work that he does. And I know that he's probably spent more time in that building than the contractors climbing through the ceilings and climbing through walls, laying down wires and cables, so.
That's because he can fit. Sorry.
You know, he did go through a, a bid process and responses and all that stuff, too.
All right, well, then that is approved. We're all in agreement, right? Did we say aye?
Yes, aye.
Aye. All right, good. All right, we are having a second reading on DJ and DJE, but we've decided to postpone that.
Okay.
Do a little bit more digging into that. Do we have anything, reason for a non-public?
No.
No. I, so I wanted to, just, I wrote these down really quick. Remind people that if they want to be part of the principal search committee, that they need to send a letter of interest to Penny Bottomen at the SAU. And then can we do a blast to remind people the voting day for the half-day?
Yes. Yes.
No, it's a day off.
Full, day off, full day off. Just to remind parents.
And Susan said you were going to, you said you were going to add the information tonight on the thirteenth for, to that as well.
Yep. All right, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Everyone in agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Elizabeth.